February the 4th, 2014, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. We'll ask Councilman Pepper Bray to lead us in our invocation and pledge, and if you would, please, rock.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in our city council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all our people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I think you can show all the council members present. Item four is approval of minutes of the January 7th, 2014 city council meeting, and council has a copy of those. If there are no additions or deletions, we'll go ahead and accept those if there are no objection. Item five is the invitation to comment. If there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on any item under new business, if you would let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you. We have no proclamations this morning. We have item seven, so the first reading. It's consideration of ordinance to rezone property located on the west side of North Highland Avenue across from Parker Drive from RS Single Family Residential District B-5, Highway Business District, containing 1.63 acres, more or less. Staff initiated the rezoning request as Cock Daniels posed number 1884 to VFW Stan.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
This is a rezoning that has been initiated by staff as a part of the purchase agreement that we had made with the VFW. We agreed that the portion of property, or the remnant of property, that was located between what we purchased and what the VFW had left, that we would consolidate their property under the same zoning class for them, and that's what we're doing here today. You can see on the map, the property that, in this area, is the property that we purchased, and then the VFW already had commercial zoning on this part, and this is just a piece in between that we are now zoning so that their property is all under one zoning scheme. So the planning commission has reviewed this and is recommending approval of it to you.
Motion to approve. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Before we vote, let me, this is ordinance on first reading, let me open a public hearing and see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If you would, please let it be known. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Stan. Item eight, the second reading, is consideration of ordinance to men title eight, alcoholic beverages, chapter two. We failed to have a public hearing on first reading, so we will now implement that public hearing and see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance on second reading. Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine is under new business, consideration of street acceptance for tradition subdivision, section four, portions of Livingston Way, Hawk Meadow Cove, and Hillside Landing, and all of Little Cove.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval and a second discussion. Council, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Council realizes and knows that our recorder, Al Lethune, has undergone some surgery and think he's doing well. The last word we had from Al that he expected to either go home today or tomorrow and begin a rehab process. And in the interim, there are a number of documents, a number of procedures that have to be taken care of by the city recorder and signed by the city recorder, so item two is consideration of appointing Sam Dawson as interim city recorder to carry out the duties of the office due to the absence of Al Lethune and his own medical leave.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion for approval and second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three is a presentation of the FY 13 audit performed by Alexander Thompson Arnold, P L L C, by Mike Hewitt, certified public accountant. Mike, if you'll come up. We getting a little feedback in the sound? You guys back in the control room? Is it me or?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. We appreciate the time on your agenda this morning. We'll try to be brief, as I know you have a lot to cover. I've got with me John Wibrew, one of my partners. He was predominantly over the field work on the audits, that's why he's here. And we'll kind of split this up and talk about it. I want to thank you all before we start, for the opportunity to do the work for you. Our staff always enjoys coming down here. Your finance department staff is very cooperative. They make our job pretty easy to do, most of the time. Every now and then, we have a curveball thrown to us. Hopefully, you've had a chance to go over the audit, and I'll, what I'll do is just cover some highlights of it. Then John's going to talk about a couple of findings, or one finding that we had. It's well over 100 pages. I realize it's a very large document.
Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead, Captain.
We don't, we don't have that information.
Copy distributed to the city, Mike, after, after the audit. Karen, do you know, or Sam, do you know if we have copies to the council? Do what, Sam?
I said I'll go to the office and get the copies.
Okay, all right. Okay, any objection, go ahead and hearing the report, and we'll have the copies in front of you. If you do have any questions that surface after today's meeting, then obviously, we can bring those back to a future meeting.
Well, I'll tell you what, as I'm talking, I might be able to put it on here, and you can see what I'm talking about. You'll just pardon my notes that I've made on the pages that I'm going to put up there. Okay, yeah, John's got a clean copy here. You got the opinion page?
Yeah.
I know you probably can't read that, but I'll point to the sections that I'm talking about, and then just get your copy, you'll be able to.
I can't read.
Scott can't read.
Anybody can read that.
You want to read that to us?
Pretty good eyesight. Right here, this paragraph right here, the reason I'm going over this, the wording has changed a little bit, and I do want to point out the, some of the changes in the wording of our actual audit report. That's, second paragraph there, I'll read that. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted, or accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error. The reason our profession put that in there is, I guess we were getting a little worried about, because it's pretty common in smaller governments and as well as commercial enterprises, for the auditor to actually prepare the financial statements, and we, our profession was getting a little worried that people were losing sight of whose financial statements they were, because we prepared them. So we, our profession decided we need to remind the audities that they are your financial statements. We might have written them for you, but they are yours, and you're responsible for them. This next paragraph right there, I'm not going to read all that, but that is the, talks about what our responsibility, our responsibility is just an issue and an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are substantially correct.
What page are we on, Mike?
We're on page nine. And while those are being handed out, I will tell you, apparently, since this is the first time you all have seen these.
I did not distribute them.
Okay, I apologize for that. When we get done, it's, I will probably slip up and say, do you have any questions? I understand that you get 100 and about 140-page documents presented to you, and in a matter of a few minutes, you really can't digest it and ask questions. So if you all would like us to come back at a later meeting, or come to one of your work sessions to answer questions, or you can pick one, or we'll come down here and meet with you individually, or you can just call us, call me, or you can call John, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have at any time. Okay, if you flip over now to page 10, the meat of what all of this is about is in the second paragraph there where it says opinion. In a very, in summary, that simply says, in our opinion, based on our audit, the financial statements are correct. And we take two and a half pages to make that simple statement, which sometimes our profession gets a little wordy. But that is the, that's the meat of the, this two and a half-page letter here, is that in our opinion, the financial statements are correct. Okay, the next section on the next page, I'm not going to go into that, because it's basically, I'll tell you what it is, this is basically a summary of the financial statements. This is, this was actually not written by us, this was prepared by your finance department staff. It's kind of a, if reading columns and numbers is not your thing, which for some people it's not, this sort of talks about financial statements in a less technical format. Okay, if you'll flip over to page 20. The, this is a statement of net position. The title on this has changed this year, for any of you who keep up with that. It used to be called Statement of Net Assets, it has changed. This is essentially the balance sheet of the city. It does contain all of the component units of the city, not all of which are under your purview. In the last two columns there, you'll see it's got JEA, which is considered a component unit of the city by virtue of the city's guarantee of some of its debt, and the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency. Those are audited separately, but they are required to be included in your financial statements. The only other thing that is not immediately under your purview is, that's in here, is a little bit, it's kind of buried under the business type activities column, and that is the operations of Jackson Transit Authority. That is considered a fund of the city, even though you all aren't immediately responsible for it, so it does go in to your financial statements. The business type activities column here, columns on these two statements, what's in that is the solid waste collection activity and disposal, the sportsplex, Jackson Transit Authority, and the community development revolving loan fund. If you look in the first column there, governmental activities, that is essentially everything else that's under your authority. The total assets for the governmental activities were $186 million, roughly. Now, that sounds like a huge number. It is a large number. But if you look at the last, about the last inch of that column, it includes your capital assets, which is all your streets, buildings, infrastructure, so forth, which makes up the majority of that $186 million. The business type activities assets were 17 million. Okay, if you flip to the next page, this is the liabilities and the net positions, the, you can see there, the liabilities, this includes all of the long-term debt of the city. The net position, if you think in terms of commercial type accounting, that's your net worth. That is the net worth of the city. And again, it looks like some big numbers, but they're not as big as they seem when you factor out the capital assets. The net position for the governmental activities is just over $83 million, but 57 million of that represents the capital assets net of the related debt. So really, if you look down below from the 57 million figure on down, that represents your net position that's available for the operations of the city. You see various restrictions there. Some money comes into you all with restrictions attached to it. To the extent that you've not spent that money yet, it has those restrictions on it. The unrestricted portion is $23.85 million. Okay, if you flip to the next page, 22, and this one, you got to turn it sideways. I'll give you a little explanation. It's a little bit hard to follow this statement, it sort of moves around a bit, and it's not in a very traditional format. This is the equivalent, on the accrual basis, to the income statement of the business. This is your income statement. Normal financial statements, you see the revenue first. In this presentation, you don't. The expenses come first. The first column there are the expenses in the various areas of governmental and business type activities. It could be more detailed than it is. This is simply the, this is probably the most condensed you could have this statement. This is simply what you all have chosen for this presentation. But anyway, the first column represents the expenses, including depreciation on your capital assets, and the next three columns represent revenues that are directly related to those expenses. They may be charges for services or grants that you got that are restricted for a certain purpose. If you go on over then, the fifth column represents the net cost, or in the, in case of public works, the net income from that activity to the city. And it's this net cost that's underwritten by your general revenues that are unrestricted. If you drop down in that column and look down at the bottom, presentation under general revenues, you'll see those broken down there with, of course, the majority being in property taxes and sales taxes. And anyway, that's what underwrites the net expense of governmental activities of $56 The next section there, just down from the governmental activities, is the business type activities. It shows each of them, and what they operated at as far as income or a loss or a profit. Of course, the biggest one is JTA, which operates at a $1.7 million loss. That is not surprising, since you all give them a substantial subsidy. Okay, if you go over to page 23, and what's, what comes after this, this first section is on the accrual basis. You all only see that once a year. It's, it's got depreciation on your capital assets, it's traditional accrual basis accounting that the private sector uses. What, starting on page 23, is a presentation of your fund financial statements, which is what you're used to seeing on a monthly basis when you look at them, somewhat a little more condensed than what you see. This has the major funds of the city, which are governmental, debt service, capital outlay, and solid waste, and then all the other funds are aggregated in that next to the last column there. Total assets of the general fund were 52 million, liabilities were 28 million, and net fund balance was 23, almost $24 million, with about $4 million of that being restricted or assigned or designated by you all in some fashion for what it's going to be used for, with the unrestricted, unassigned portion being 20, just over $20 million. There's one number I want to explain to you. It's, it affects page 23, and it's in a couple of places. If you'll look up under, under general fund, taxes receivable is $25 million, and down under deferred revenue, property taxes, it's 20, there's $25 million. We get a lot of questions about that. The typical question is, do you mean people owe us $25 million in unpaid property taxes? And no, they do not, as of June 30th. The Tennessee property tax calendar is a little bit strange. The actual levy attaches to the property on January the 1st. So January 1st of this year, the property tax levy for, that you all will pass in May and June of this year, that will be paid by the, by your property owners in October of next year, actually attaches legally to the property, January 1st of 2014. And under, and I don't agree with it, but unfortunately, I don't make the rules, I just have to live by them. Under generally accepted accounting principles, the, you have to record the receivable for those taxes at the point that the levy attaches to the property, which is January the 1st. So this was, this, most of this 25 million, you do have some uncollected taxes, but not a substantial amount. Most of that 25 million represents the property taxes for the next fiscal year that you all collected in October and after, in 2013. Now, you say, well, it's an asset, we can't, and the reason you can't spend it is it's also in this number down here in deferred revenue. That is why that is so large. And I, forgive me for getting kind of technical, that was, we do get a lot of questions about that number, though, because it's so big.
Mike, quick question on that one.
Yes.
The difference in those two numbers, is that's what you actually owed for the prior year?
No, the, the difference in those two numbers is what you collected in July and August, basically. Because under the accounting principles, you go by the revenues that are earned in the previous year, which those were, they just weren't collected, for uncollected taxes that people really did owe you. What you collect in July and August is accrued as revenue of the previous year, and that, that would account for, it's not considered deferred, it's considered like you did collect it. So that would account for the difference between those two, most of it. There are other a couple of minor things, but that would be most of the difference. Okay, if you flip over to page 25, this is the statement of revenues and expenditures. This is a little, little more used to what you're seeing, since this is what most city councils zero in on, on a monthly basis. General fund had revenues of just over $60 million, expenditures of 59.5, or a surplus before transfers of 1.1 million. And with your transfers in and out, you ended up with a net change in fund balance of 1.6 And with that, I won't go into all of the other detail that's behind there, I wouldn't encourage you to read it. If you have trouble sleeping at night, I promise you it'll take care of that problem. If you flip back to page 108, we've got two other reports back here. I want to tell you what these are. We also have to report on your internal control in compliance with major laws and so forth that might affect your financial statements. We do have one finding on internal control, which John's going to go over here in just a minute. Other than that, we, we had no findings to report to you on your internal control or compliance. Okay, the, page 110, what this is, you all get a fair amount of governmental financial assistance, both from the federal government and from the state. This report, what, covers what comes directly from the federal government and indirectly from the federal government through the state of Tennessee and other agencies that may pass through federal funds to you. When you have more than $500,000 in federal funds, which you all do consistently every year, you have to do, or we have to do what's called a single audit, which is where we look at your major programs, your major federal programs, and look and test to see whether or not you're, you've complied with the long list of rules and regulations that you have to comply with when you get federal money. And this is a two-page report, but it basically, it says that we found no instances of noncompliance, or no, no issues with your internal control which might lead to noncompliance. And with that, we do have a, one finding and a couple of management letter comments. I'm going to let John address those.
If you flip over to page 113, you'll see the finding for this year. We had one finding related to exceeding budgeted expenditures. If you look at the, the condition that lays out the details of what happened, we noted that in the general fund, expenditures exceeded appropriations. In the public works department, by 157,000, public welfare and community service by 314,000. Also, we noticed that in the solid waste collection fund, expenditures exceeded appropriations by 562,000. That was primarily due to transfers in the general fund exceeding budget by $1.3 million. The debt service fund also exceeded appropriations by $29,000. The finding, last year, we had one finding related to accounting for citations. We reviewed the, everything related to that this year, and that finding has been cleared up. There were no problems related to it this year. You should have also received a management letter. It's just a two-page letter that went with the financial statements separately, not bound with it.
You all see that in your packet. I'll put it up there, I don't know, you probably can't read that, but you all have that?
Is this a separate letter?
Yeah, separate letter.
Well, we issued, we issued two separate letters. One's just a routine communication to you, the other was, it's got two paragraphs here labeled one and two.
Okay, I don't think we did receive that then.
Okay, we can just read those.
The management letter comments this year are just issues that we saw that needed correcting, that we didn't think were finding related to when the report. Both of the management letter comments this year were related to Jackson Community Development. There weren't any related to actual city activities. First one is, we noted that monitoring site visits are not being performed on subrecipients of the grant money at community development. One of the requirements in the grants that you get over there is that if there's money that goes out to other parties, that it has to be monitored by the, the community development to make sure it's being spent in accordance with the grant documents. We talked to them about that. It was something that just had never come up before. They didn't have an issue with that going forward. The second comment, we noted that expenditures of the grants per the general ledger did not equal the expenditures of the grants per the comprehensive annual performance evaluation report that filed. It's a report that has to be filed for the grants. We looked at it and sat down with them and went through all of it, and it ended up just being an issue with the report. The general ledger tied to all the other reports that were filed, district board just had a number that was filed in error. So again, it wasn't, you know, we talked through it, and it was something that they fixed in going forward. Those were the only two management letter comments we had. All the other, I think we had a couple other comments last year that were all cleared up this year. So those were the major issues. Any questions?
Again, I realize that we handed you that report about 10 minutes ago, so asking you if you've got any questions is a little tough, so if you do, when you do have a chance to look, look at it in detail, if you have a question, feel free to call either one of us.
Okay, thank you, Guy.
Thank you so much.
Item four is a contract for a, with Thompson Consultants for computer leasing. Flight.
Proposals were received on computer leasing, and we received three, Thomas Consultants, CDW, and Dale Financial Services, and it is the recommendation to award this to Thomas Consultants for the lease of 75 computers over a three-year term.
Move to award the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, we have removed item five for a contingent study, so we'll go down to item six on new business, consideration of contract with a detail shop for car washing services.
It's time again to rebid the car washing services for the city of Jackson, and this is mainly for our police vehicles. We currently have Vincent Weeks with the detail shop.
but when the bids went out, Cole's Detail Service on Airways was the lowest and best bidder. $10 to hand wash the exterior only, and $13.50 to hand wash and sanitize the interior and hand wash the exterior.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And item seven is consideration of lease with Woodstock Bakery to upgrade a grill restaurant at Farmer's Market.
I was asked by Nona Brummett, who manages the Farmer's Market, to send out bids and, or proposals for someone to come into the grill. We sent them out in November. We had one lady who was interested, and we worked with her to get her insurance for two months. And after she thought about it for a while, she decided not to pursue this venture. She spread this word that the grill was open to Woodstock Bakery. They have a bakery out north. And they expressed interest to come into the grill. They adhered to our specifications. And he will be coming in, working Tuesdays and Fridays from 10 to 3, Saturdays from 8 to 4. And when the amphitheater opens and we have events down there, he'll be open at night as well. He serves all sorts of bakery items and sandwiches. And Nona is going to speak with him to see if he would make some sort of breakfast food available in the mornings.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Item eight is board appointments to the mid-quarter of West Tennessee Cultural Arts Center Board, the appointments of Hampton Williams and Linda S. Woods, and the reappointment of Richard Beach.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Commission, the appointment of Wayne Arnold, and reappointment of Manoa Patterson.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
In honor, keep Jackson Beautiful Commission, the reappointment of Sandy McDermott.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is, and the vote is unanimous.
Final appointment is to the vicious dog committee, the reappointment of Mark Robertson.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item nine is the budget amendments.
We have three budget amendments this month that we're looking at to approve. The first one we have is a budget amendment for the Jackson Police Department to hire nine new police officers for which the salary and benefits need to be budgeted from April 1 through June 30. Total amount of this budget amendment is $105,797.95. This will be a draw on fund balance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second budget amendment that we have is for the Farmer's Market. Budget amendment's being proposed for the building of an amphitheater at the Farmer's Market venue. The total amount of the amendment is $57,386. And again, this will be a draw on fund balance.
So moved.
Motion, second. Discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The third amendment that we have is for the library capital. Budget amendment's proposed for Jackson Mass County Library roof replacement in the amount of $12,750. Madison County will be reimbursing the city of Jackson one-third of this cost in the amount of $4,250. Again, this will be a draw on fund balance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Before we adjourn, let me just recognize the presence of a former police chief. Former Chief Rick Staples is here. Hope we had any other honored guests with us, but so welcome. Be in no further business. Meeting is adjourned.